Good morning. The June 14th, 2022 Board Work Session is now in order. Mr. Gibbs, roll call please.
Ms. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Ms. Jenkins.
Present.
Ms. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
I'm here.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. During this morning's work session, we'll be receiving a budget update and have public hearings on five policies. Ms. Losinski, CFO, will present the budget update.
I'm looking to see if it's still morning. So, good morning, Madam Chair for Dr. Mullins. So, there were three bricklayers, and they were pretty high on Scalford. And they were high enough that this architect that was walking by, well, I mean, they were high enough that you wouldn't want to fall. And then this architect was walking by, and he yells up to the three men, and they're working really hard. They're laying bricks. One is reaching up high, the other one's doing some other thing. But they're working fast, they're working hard. And the architect says, what are you guys doing up there? And the first bricklayer says, you know, what do you think I'm doing? I'm a bricklayer. I'm laying bricks. I'm trying to make a living and, you know, to feed my family. And the second bricklayer says, yeah, you know, I'm a builder, and I'm building an amazing wall. It's going to be sturdy, wind, everything. It will not be able to knock that wall down. And then the third bricklayer, who's actually the most productive, and with great pride, he looks down and he said, well, he's actually looking up, and then he looks down at the architect and says, I'm building a cathedral. I am building a place where everyone in this town can come and worship. So, you know, all three men are actually doing about the same task, but they all have three different perspectives on what they're doing. One had a job, the other one had a career, and the third one, he had a calling, or he had a sense of purpose. And I think that's where I would say everyone on the dais and everybody in the room, everyone in this room, in their mind, builds cathedrals. And when you kind of think about it, what is a cathedral for education? I mean, you heard the assistant principals. They, I think everyone, almost everyone said, thank you for believing in me. Thank you for believing in me. I appreciate all my mentors. And I think that's what it's all about for education. We have to believe every student can succeed in order for every student to succeed. And if we educators and mentors believe and see what any child can become, and that child all of a sudden, you know, may not even realize this untapped potential, that's huge. And that's why, I think that's why we're all here. So, again, believing in students is proven to increase achievement. If someone doesn't believe in you, especially as a student, you know, they, it's tough. So, when that teacher can look at somebody and see their potential, I just, that's what we all need to strive for. That's how we'll get to serve every student with excellence as a standard. But we have to believe every student can succeed with excellence. So, for the district priorities, you know, we have to protect an excellent education, and we just talked about that. We have to have the power of purpose. We need to make sure that students believe they can achieve, and that the instructors believe the students can achieve. And the mission, that's the mission, is to provide an excellent education. But we can't do that unless we have amazing and effective work, amazing and effective workforce. And one of the challenges, one of the goals that we have, is to be able to provide compensation, competitive compensation, for all our employees. We also have to keep in mind about the taxpayers' interest. We need to make sure that every dollar counts. And if that dollar isn't going towards an amazing education for our students, it probably shouldn't be spent. And then we also have to make sure that we maintain the fiscal strength of the district, because you never, you never know what could happen. You have to be, you have to be able to sustain what we're doing. So, we need to make sure that we project and just have a balanced budget and a sustainable budget. I really like this quote from Barack Obama. This was to a group of students when they were going back to school. He says, no matter what you want to do with your life, I guarantee that you'll need an education to do it. And this isn't just important for your own life and your own future. What you make of your education will decide nothing less than the future of this country. And, I mean, education's a big, big deal. And I, he's telling these kids, you can do it. I believe in you, and we need you. You've seen these slides already, but do you want to kind of walk through them? You can see, and I know you know this, but for the public that may be listening, that enrollment, that's how we get the majority of our operating dollars is through enrollment. And enrollment is money, right? So, we receive money from the state based on enrollment, and we receive the funding in our FEFP. And then within the FEFP, they, it includes district dollars, it includes charter dollars, and it also includes scholarship dollars. So, you really have to take a look at the different columns to see where we really are, because you could look at it and say, wow, you know, total bivouled in 1920, pre-pandemic, 73,000 students. And that is true. However, the funding for the district is based on enrollment of 64,500 versus the total. And so, you have to take a look at that, make sure you understand that part. And then if you'd go and look at 2021, you'll see there, that is where we were held harmless. So, we had a dip in enrollment. Actually, it was more than a dip because of the pandemic. It was about 3,600 FTE. And we were actually held harmless. So, since we were held harmless, we were able to keep those dollars and work towards all those things that we had to do with the pandemic, going, doing the virtual training or teaching and just everything, all the things that went along with the pandemic and keeping everybody safe. So, the state let us keep those dollars so all the school districts could sustain and make it through the year. And then you'll go and you'll see in 2122 that we did not, we did not get that bounce back to where we were in 1920. And then if you take a look, the scholarships, if you go through there and you go down on 2122, when you look at the scholarships, they about doubled. However, it's a little deceiving, too, because about 1,000 of those students are, were actually students that never stepped foot in a bivouled school. They were actually students that were sitting in a private school. And then when they were able, when the parents were able to use scholarship funding, they chose to do that. So, about 1,000, again, of that increase are students that never came in or were never in BPS. And about 500 were homeschoolers, and the parents were able to go and take advantage of funding for, to educate their kids with the homeschooling through FES. And you can see in 2223, bivouled is staying relatively flat. And then 23, when I say bivouled, the district is staying relatively flat. And 2324, in the out years, is based on the EDR projections. But we don't project great, large increases in the, in the next couple of years. So, is this the new normal? We don't know. But right now, this is where we are. And again, you can look at the total for 2122, and you'll see 74,000. You could say, wow, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of enrollment. We, you know. But in actuality, our enrollment is 61,900. So, a difference there. And this slide, again, kind of shows you in a picture of the percentage. And it's a little bit deceiving when I was looking at it again, because not all of that light blue on top is really students that we lost, because, because they never stepped foot in a BPS. That said, though, that funding does come in our FEFP. So, we have to make sure that we budget for it and make sure that we're setting aside enough dollars to cover the scholarships, because if we don't, then we'll have to use district dollars to cover the funding if we didn't budget correctly for scholarships and charters. So, again, the charters and the scholarships are a pass-through through the, through the FEFP. So, the governor signed the Freedom First Budget on January 2nd, and it didn't change. The first calc did not change, or the conference report. So, it's the same numbers that I had presented back in March. And you can see the BSA increase, state average increased $214, about 5%. But it also had something, some things tied to it. We were, you know, the districts are required to make sure every employee is making $15 an hour by October 1st, and also increases in retirement funding or FRS. And then the next bullet, you'll see per-student funding increase. And a lot of times, people get those two confused. The base salary increase or the BSA is kind of discretionary-ish, as in it should be discretionary dollars. However, the state many times says, you're getting this money, but you have to cover FRS, you have to cover minimum wage. If there is any inflation, you got to cover that. And if you want to give compensation or raises, you got to cover that. And if you have any healthcare issues or health, rise in cost in healthcare, you got to cover that, too, in the BSA. Now, the per-student funding is everything. So, that includes all the categoricals that you see below. And this year, I think it's a win. It doesn't do everything that we want to do for our teachers. I mean, it is a win. So, they increased the teacher salary allocation. And opposed to last year, where it was an 80/20 split, this year, it's a 50/50 split. So, what that means is 50% of the growth goes towards getting all the starting teacher salary up to 47.5 at a minimum. And then the rest of the funding can go to veteran teachers. And that will help with the compression. It won't fix the problem with the compression, but it's a good first start. And then you can see that transportation, reading increase, mental health, safe school increase. A lot of good things are happening and provided from the state. And the other thing that the governor did was he, he reversed the recognition program, the school recognition program. I don't know if you recall that there were, I don't know, was it 1214 districts did not, weren't going to get the recognition dollars because of mask mandates and those kind of things. And he changed that, and he said, you know, it's the schools, it's the teachers that earned, that, you know, earned that and achieved that. They're the ones with the power of purpose that are helping our students. And those schools should be able to still get the funding that all the other districts are. We don't want to hurt the students or the, the teachers. So, so, he reversed that. The 200 million is not in the FEFP. It's coming out of the government, of the governor's funding this year. And I expect that'll be in the FEFP next year. And then, so, highlights for the district, doesn't change much. Again, we have to, it'll cost us $5 million to get our, get all our employees up to at least $15 an hour. And we will have a compression issue. Salary compression is when everybody's making the same amount of dollars, even though maybe, you know, some are more senior and those kind of things. That's something that we need to work on. But, you know, we are thankful for being able to get the, the funding to raise the minimum wage. And then we'll have 3.4 million in FRS, and then inflationary costs. You know, every day, I get a little bit more. I don't know what's going to come with the inflation cost, but I know when I drive by a gas station, it doesn't, does concern me. But, you know, we have to still continue on and make sure we plan and plan for the, for the next year. So, I can't tell you what the inflationary cost increases will bring. I'm certain that it'll bring higher contract costs, but I just don't know at what level at this time. And then again, you have the per-student funding increase that we talked about earlier. The teacher salary increase is six, the increase is 6.6 million. And so, that split, 50/50. Transportation increase, you'll see, is 1.4. I originally thought we could save some dollars there, because we actually spend, I think it's like 65 cents to the dollar, 68 cents to the dollar in transportation. So, we have to supplement transportation. So, we needed this 1.4. With the fuel going up, we may not get as much savings as I had hoped. The reading increase is wonderful. We actually put about that much funding in the reading allocation, so we could have reading coaches at every school. And so, that will cover that and free up money that we've been supplementing. Mental health increase, safe schools. Again, that's very, very important. And that, that funding also went up. And again, the school recognition program for all the eligible schools. And when we did receive school recognition dollars several years ago, it was, I think it was around 3.8 million dollars. I don't know what it'll be this year. I know he's allocated 200 million. I don't know how that split will look. And so, we looked at this, and you have the third calc to the first calc. Now, I didn't change it to fourth calc to first calc, because these are the numbers that the legislature built their budget on. So, we want to use their same numbers. And then you can see where, where we are with our BSA and our total revenue per student, which again, includes charters, it includes scholarships. So, all the funding here with these calculations includes that pass-through as well. And then this next slide, we went through these. The highlight I want to show you is the, the state net of categoricals. What that really means is that's the state funding increase, the 8.9 outside of the categoricals. So, that's 8.9 million dollars that we can have discretionary use for. And then when you look at the state funding, you see the, or I'm sorry, the local funding, you see the 18.8 million. And that's also discretionary. But the total change, 42 million, 42.1 million. And again, that's not dollars that goes all to the district. The, there's about 110 million that is a pass-through that, that goes to charters and scholarships. And this breaks out some more of the categoricals. And then if you recall, at the March Budget Update, that bottom line was 3.6. We continue to revise the numbers as we get more information, as we understand things that are, they're changing and those kind of things, increases in cost for contracts. We reduced the minimum wage increase. It used to be 6 million. And as we scrubbed that down, I believe it'll be 5 million. Again, this is their estimates. And then the FRS rate, originally, I had at 4 million, and we scrubbed that as well. And I believe it'll be more like 3.4. Again, as we move, as we understand Again, as we move, as we understand what our enrollment actually is, we'll be able to continue to revise these numbers. So when you take the total revenue, the 4.21, you subtract out the categoricals, you take out all the pass-throughs, available funding is 13.2. Then we take out the minimum wage, the FRS, and our remaining revenue that we can use for compensation, that we can use for healthcare. The, the remaining discretionary dollars is 4.8 at this point. So the benefits, obviously, there's great benefits to this budget. And we went through all of these. And, go on to the next. And then one of the things I wanted to talk about was the importance of audits. So we welcome the accountability. The taxpayers entrust us with their treasure. It's an incredible responsibility. And we want, we open our books to anyone because we want to be able to make sure that we are transparent and that the dollars, every dollar counts that are going, is going to the right places. And I believe in audits is, is my thought is it's an investment and it makes us better. And, you know, in findings regarding, the first thing I look at when, if there's a finding is, was it a system issue? Was it a process issue? Was it a person problem? Or, you know, a manual breakdown? Or was it a problem of time, meaning there just wasn't enough of it? And, you know, it wasn't a priority? So kind of narrow down the root cause. And then the effect, you know, can we identify what the effect was? What the root cause was? And can we change that? We need to ensure that we have the internal controls and prevent fraud, waste, and abuse. And then the thing that I like to do is look for a bright spot. You know, you can look at all the findings and, and we need to see those. But we also have bright spots. And then if we have a bright spot somewhere, maybe that bright spot can be transported all over and bring more bright spots. So if somebody's doing something really well, we want it shared. And we want people to, to take a look at where people are doing things well. And then again, on the bottom there, audits. It's not about paperwork. It's about everybody doing their job correctly. And then we recently had an audit committee. And there was some discussion about difference between an internal audit and external audit. And basically, an internal audit is our internal auditors. We are like, you know, we, the audit committee will take a look and say, "What are the concerns within the district? Hey, I'm kind of worried about the process over here." Or, "Can you take a look over here?" It's things that we direct, things that we want to make sure is right, things that may have high risks. And we just want to make sure that everything's going well. So we just have somebody, our internal auditors, go in and check it out for us. And so the internal auditors for us is RMS. And they report to the audit committee. They assess risk and best practices. They do tests, internal controls. And then they recommend what they, you know, anything that they see that could better the process. And it's continuous. It isn't once a year. It's continuous. They're going in, they're, they're looking at the processes. And then after they do that, they'll come back later and check to make sure the fixes are still there or the fixes work. And then on external is more, it's a third party. It's something, you know, it's a requirement by the state or a different agency. And, you know, they, they go and they confirm that you're following the laws, regulations, grants, accounting standards. And, you know, we have MSL. They have to come look at our books every year at the end of the year and give us a financial statement or a financial opinion. And this isn't normally voluntary. I mean, they come. It's by law, by statute. And then you'll see in the next slide, or the next two slides, that the Audit General is here now. And they are required to come every three years. And so this slide just kind of shows you some of the things that we've done over the year. You can see that the annual financial audit. And then we're also, according to Red Book, we have to have an internal audit on our internal accounts from the schools, which is kind of the fees and fundraising, those kind of things. And we also take a look at the SRTAX. We do that every, I think every other, every six months. Education technology. So making sure that people can't hack into our systems is really important. So they'll do those kind of intrusion tests. Similist funding is all the funding that we've received, the ESAR, the CARES, the ARP, all those dollars, a lot of dollars. And, you know, we were, RSM, go look and make sure that our processes are in place so we can ensure that we have the transparency and that we're using these dollars as they're intended. And then again, you'll see cycle audits, some of the ones that we continue to do, like timekeeping and the MSL. They're here now. They're, they're pulling all this data to start working on their audit for our books at the end of the year. And then also, we have the Audit General here. It comes every three years. They're looking at our financial and they're looking at our operational. In the operational, they're looking at mental health plan, make sure that we're following all the regulations and guidelines, law. They're also, they looked at school safety and tested that. And they're looking at how we're calculating and providing TSIA for the teachers. So, and, and that's what they're doing so far. We still don't know everything that they're going to look at, but they're going to give us a good look. And we welcome it. We want to get better. So challenges, that is, the first bullet, I believe, is the most challenging because we have a finite budget and we have so many things that we have to do. And we, we have a finite budget. 80% of our budget is labor. And then you've seen all of the restricted areas. We have very little discretionary dollars. And what discretionary dollars that we have, we just really need to use it so sparingly because it's just so important. Because we want to provide recurring compensation to all our employees. We know that that's just so important. We want them to have great healthcare or, yeah, we do want them to have great healthcare. We also are aware of the compression issues. So we got to balance all that with, you know, the, the finite amount of money. The, the increase for healthcare this year, the projections, 13 million dollars. That's a lot of money. In the previous slide, you saw 4.8. So you may wonder, well, what are we going to do with the, you know, how are we going to get other dollars? So we're going to change our processes. In, historically, we had, so again, 80% of our budget is labor. And no matter, even in the best years, we're going to have vacant positions. And vacant positions are going to generate LAP, which is additional dollars or dollars that weren't spent on the labor. And then the other thing that we've done historically is have a reserve for employee unit. So if, you know, if a school enrollment goes way up, then we need more teachers. So we have reserve units. So we're going to, we're going to do something different. We're going to use that reserve funding. And we're going to put it in the front. And we're going to use that buying power. And then that's going to, that's reoccurring dollars that allows us to, it allows us to provide compensation for our employees. It allows us to have additional recurring dollars to help with our healthcare costs. And it, it's just a smarter way of doing business. Instead of letting the, the LAP rate and the, you know, if we use the reserves, those dollars fall to the bottom every year and then pay recurring requirements at the end of the year. Let's just put it all up front. So we're going to budget for all those items that we normally pay at the end of the year. And we're going to budget for what we spend. And we'll have less LAPs or we'll have less fallout at the end of the year. But we're also using that buying power more effectively. And again, we talked about many of these risks, inflation, supply line disruptions. We're seeing that right now. I mean, if you try to buy a van, I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. And then we have the ESAR. ESAR's been an amazing assistant in helping educate our kids and providing programs. And it's just been amazing, however it's going to end. So we need to make sure that we have a soft landing with our, for our ESAR. And then we also need to start planning for a flat enrollment recovery. Or if we're not going to recover, what are we going to change? Because, you know, again, we have a finite amount of money that can be used towards compensation and the other things that we want to do. So it's one of those things is what are we going to do and what we're not going to do? So that's what we, that's our challenge. But again, I think we're in a much better position than we were the last two years. And I'm looking forward to seeing how the year plays out. And this is our budget adoption timeline. And this is, this is good news. So our tax roll came back, an estimate, and it came March, I'm sorry, May 31st. And it increased. It increased to 61.9 billion dollars. So that is money that is on our tax roll. And we'll get the certified amount in July, July 19th, no later than. So just based on this estimate, we, our LCI or our local capital investment went up about 7.4 million dollars. So we came to you last month, or I'm sorry, in March. And we told you that we had about 28.7 million dollars remaining for projects. And now we're up to 35.3. So we're going to reconvene the committee, take a look at, you know, the different projects, what we want to do, and come back with a recommendation of, now that we have additional capital dollars, what is the best spend for those? And again, this was the list that we provided prior. So are there any questions?
I have a simple one. And it's, I think, let me check, I think it's on slide six. So we've seen this slide before many times. But I just, something I just never asked. So when we're presenting this data with the numbers from the district, the charter, the scholarship, when we have students that access scholarships, for instance, like the McKay, but they use it to go to a BPF school from one to another, one that's outside of their zone school, is that reflected in the number of scholarship? Or is that reflected still in district? Because they're staying within the district, but they access the scholarship and use it?
In that case, so FTE isn't necessarily one student. So if a student came in halfway through the school year, they would be a .5, those kind of things. So I, so it would be split. It would be split. It wouldn't be one student. Maybe it would be district, a certain percentage in the McKay.
Okay. I was just curious because, because we've seen that significant jump. I know that you were saying, these are also students that never split in BPS, so that number is inflated as well as homeschool students. So just curious.
But I think what you're asking is if they moved one BPS school to another BPS school, that wouldn't necessarily be reflected here. They'd still be under the district.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I've got a question. So on, just, I'm going to maybe just start with the backend, the capital dollars you talked about. We're going to have increased spending for that. And I'm glad you guys are going back to the table because even if we added in the add-back list, that's still only a couple million dollars more. So my question is, did you guys already build into the original list some inflationary cushion, knowing where we were? Or is it possible that the projects that we already have might need some of this to just get them done?
That's a good point. Yes, we would have to relook at that as well.
Okay. But you don't know, I mean, some of them did build in a little bit. Because I mean, we were, when you guys were convening this spring, I mean, we were already feeling effects of some of that. I mean, if it's, if it was then current pricing at the time, you know.
Right. And timing too. If you purchase vehicles or buses or computers, you know, with the supply line disruptions, are they going to come in timely? Those, and you know, there's supply and demand. So when there's less supply, the costs go up with demand. That, that's a very good point that we'll have to take a look at.
Right. And then the last question, going back to the, um, the slide with the tax assessment history. Of course, for LCI, that's great news because, you know, it will naturally increase, like you said, than amount of capital dollars we get. It's not necessarily reflected in our general funding because that's controlled by the state. But the state did, if I'm, if I remember correctly, it looks like our required local effort is going to actually remain flat from last budget year to this budget year. I know we don't probably know the exact number because I think that comes out in July, right? But isn't it estimated, it's going to be actually, they're not going to roll it back. The state didn't necessarily roll back the rates again like they have for the last seven years. Am I, am I reading that correctly? I mean, you didn't have it in your presentation, but when I, it seems like that's what I had heard when I, the budget was presented.
Right. So when it comes to the general fund, like, like you said, or the Fund 100, those dollars are from all the, the tax, property tax are all sent up to the state and then they allocate it out. So, you know, they built their budget and that's the budget. So if, even though our, our dollars are going up quite a bit, or our tax rolls going up, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be able to keep all those dollars. But with the LCI, that's a 1.5 mil. And that's for capital. And so they'll be able to keep that. Now, on the operating side, we also have that, if you recall, that .748 mil. And I was very excited about that and did the calculations and was hoping that we had an increase in dollars. But then there's also that other categorical that is for districts that are below average. And that was about 8 million dollars, according to the conference report. But when you do all the math, it ends up washing. So we.
So we lose on that.
We, we don't lose, but we don't gain.
Okay. Gotcha. So I guess, I, I do realize that the change in that won't, if it, if it does remain flat, it doesn't have effect on our revenue because that's based on students. But I just wondered if it was in any way a kind of a recognition by the state that we do need to realize that increase in funding, you know, through the year, through the years.
And again, we'll know more in July, when we get the second calc. Because that's when the FDOE sends down what, what we can. when the FDOE sends down what, what we can act.
Thank you.
Can we put that one up there? Can we put that one up there that has the different years with the different?
Property value?
Not the property value, that one went over. It's the other one that has scholarship.
Okay.
I don't have, I don't have access to my thing.
Oh, not a problem. Is that the one you're looking for?
It's six.
Can you, can you go to her computer?
It's on the screen, Mr. Susan.
So, because there was an anomaly that was, I was speaking to a group of people over at a church last week, and district means that's how many students actually step foot into our schools, right? Charter means that's how many students actually step foot into a charter, right? Scholarship, that's McKay Scholarship and homeschool there, that was that?
There's some homeschool, but it's...
Family empowerment scholar.
Yeah, family empowerment is the overarching.
That's, so there was an anomaly where they were saying that there's a lot of homeschool students who are part of like a charter school type online system that looks like it's acting like a charter school. But do we have the homeschool totals is what I was looking for? Do we have that? Or is that something I should just?
That's something that we can get for you.
Okay, no big deal. I just, I just didn't know if they were baked into that, that's all.
I do know...
Just like a group of homeschool students that are part of a like charter or private school, that it's beyond a co-op, like an actual curriculum and stuff that they buy into, and it's being, it's going, it's a little off. I'll just, that's all, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Ms. Lasinski referenced, what I believe you're talking about, Mr. Susan, is that within family empowerment scholarship, there are students who never came to provide public schools, who were previously home education, that are now receiving a family empowerment scholarship for participation in a private school. So, that jump in participation in family empowerment includes students who never, one, that were always in private and stayed in private, as well as some who may have gone from home ed to private, but never came into provide public schools. Did I reflect that correctly, Ms. Lasinski?
You did. The, the family empowerment also provides vouchers for parents that homeschool. So, parents that homeschool that did that, you know, without additional funding, are now able to receive funding for that.
Yeah, if you can just email me the last five-year totals for homeschool, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lasinski.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now going to begin our public hearings. Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 3315 Student and Staff Wellness? Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 3315 Student and Staff Wellness? Does any board member have anything to discuss pertaining to this policy? All right. Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 5121 Controlled Open Enrollment? Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 5121 Controlled Open Enrollment? Does any board member have anything to discuss pertaining to this policy? Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 7250 Commemoration of School Facilities? Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 7250 Commemoration of School Facilities? Does any board member have anything to discuss pertaining to this policy? Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 7110 Student Accommodation? Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 7110 Student Accommodation? Does any board member have anything to discuss pertaining to this policy? Is there anyone present who wishes to address Board Policy 8510 Wellness? Stellini?
I just had a quick question. I'm happy to see that wellness is being prioritized, and, but I would like to ask how parents and community members can review the wellness curriculum updates. If somebody could get back to me with that, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Stellini. Ms. Stellini, do you want to respond to that?
Ms. Stellini, I know that it's on the, there's a webpage, and I know our website sometimes is tricky to navigate. Dr. Sullivan, can you help me about how they can look at our wellness? Because I'm certainly part of the, you know...
Go to departments, food and nutrition services, correct?
Oh, that's right.
And then over on the side, at the very bottom, on the link, if you're on your phone, it's a little different, but it says wellness policy, and there is the annual wellness policy and, oop, all right, and updates are all there. It's under food and nutrition services and procedures.
All right. Anybody have anything else? All right. If there is no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.